Oh, never mind, I figured it out. And in number three, where you said this would be used in mixed-use development, we took that out because conditional zoning would not be used in mixed-use development.
We, okay, we did.
We took it out, yeah.
Yeah, we said, deleted the following words.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it?
The only other thing I would say is our draft on conditional zoning is definitely not final.
Okay, all right. I, I didn't know one way or the other. Okay, and I, I could, I'm just gonna go attach the one you sent me. I'm not gonna, I wasn't gonna print it out or anything.
That's totally fine.
Okay, so, fi- instead of take that fine.
Yeah.
All right. That's it? Uh, somebody wants to?
Guys got any questions?
I don't know if it matters or not that I wasn't present at this meeting. I was down in South Carolina.
I know, I, I don't know why I said present, it was supposed to be absent, I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
It's okay.
That's all right, she's still gotta stay. You don't get to leave, Teresa. Okay, so we've got one, that one correction.
All right, two corrections, okay.
Anything else, guys? Okay, motion to approve.
Somebody else other than me since I put together the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. All in favor? I opposed, no.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna recommend, I guess when we get to new business, I can do that. Guys, ready to dive into conditional zoning?
No.
Sure.
That's where I spent most of my day and I'm not sure whether I made it better or worse, to be honest.
Okay, so now, if, since you sent us another one, then I do have to go to my mail because I can't go in there. So that's gonna take me, uh, you know how it is. All right, what, how, what did you actually change, Mary? So instead of reading of.
In conditional zoning, a little behind. I didn't really change it, I, the more I read, the more questions I developed, so. Um.
I didn't, I, I didn't even notice until I was in the car that you sent it, so therefore I'm not, I did not review anything.
And that's okay because it was late this afternoon when I did it.
Okay, so what do?
So, I think we were pretty good, and Al, if you got a chance to read this, conditional zoning, I think it's easier than we think in some respects, and I think it's more complicated than a couple of them. Well, I think we knocked the easy ones out last week, like the purpose, the procedure, how to initiate, the base standards, conditions, that kinda stuff. Um, let's go to, though, uh, E, conditions and requirements.
Okay, E?
Yeah.
Since I'm not looking at it, I have to.
Yeah. You wanna look online till yours comes up?
Uh, well, let me find it first.
Okay. One of the, one of the questions we had in E was dimensional standards.
Dimension, oh yeah, we will do that.
Okay, kinda down toward the bottom. It says such conditions may also relax applicable standards as long as no dimensional standard is relaxed by more than ten percent.
Okay.
Can I ask where you're at?
Yeah, conditional zoning, number E.
Is it, is it someone article I'm on or?
Oh, it, we're on, she sent this earlier today, it's like a draft for the new conditional zoning.
Oh, sorry, where are you looking?
I'm in the, uh.
UDO?
Yeah, that's all right. I, I can catch up.
That's all right, I'll let you find it, it's not a big deal.
Well, he's moving that, I'm gonna look at the S O G. Just. No, there it is right there.
Okay.
I, I don't know if my computer is connected or not connected, cause it's not doing anything.
Is it Foxfire guest?
No, but my computer, there was no reason for my computer to, uh.
You got a Mac, don't you? Nobody?
No, I have an HP, there was no, no reason for my computer to.
So she was right here.
To be disconnected, but I don't know, I'm, I'm not getting any.
Did you, okay, where do you connect? Go down to where you.
Right here.
I guess not.
I think one more in.
Usually I don't, I just, the mail I was, that's it.
Just before this, this is the file that she just sent, so it might be beneficial to have both and I'll gladly put my screen over when I see her comments. That was kinda like her question in here. Okay, so, when we get to dimensional standards, is the definition of? That's the question, or the addition of removal of?
Well, well, both. I think if we choose to leave this in, then I think we need to add dimensional standards, um, to our UDO definitions.
I agree with that, and I think, um, where you were talking about maybe removing the ten percent, we had talked a little bit about that before. After reading over the S O G, we cannot.
Yeah, and we're gonna come to that, but one of the things, as I was reading on Canon and Coats, I put a lot of stuff in here from New Hanover County, which is Wilmington, just because it, it happened to be where I landed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the reason a lot of them use ten percent is because whenever you do something administratively, okay, it has to be, let me say that again. The whole, the whole case for conditional zoning comes to a public hearing, okay? But after that, if you have a small change to something, we have to delineate what can be done administratively and what would have to go through to another public hearing. And one of the things they hammered in Canon and Coats was that when you talk about making minor changes, okay, they have to be specific, they have to be neutral, and they have to be.
Objective.
Objective, thank you, but I knew there were three things, okay? That's why everything I looked at used this ten percent thing, okay? Um, and I can give you, I was thinking about it this afternoon, because if you use Windy Ridge as the example, let's say that when they came in and it was approved and they cited the mailbox kiosk in a certain place, and then the power company started doing their thing, and they said, well, we have to go right where your mailbox kiosk is. Would you really wanna force the developer to come to another public hearing just cause he had to move the location of the mailbox? You wouldn't, you, you just, you, you, you just wouldn't do that.
Successive.
Okay? Um, and Lisa also has, um, as a zoning administrator, when she looks at plans, the ability to give a ten percent variance on a setback based on the configuration of the lot, cause we, not all lots in Foxfire are nice and square. I mean, we have some that are very narrow, we have some.
That is weird. Super weird to say the word.
You're so funny. But anyway, I don't think that we can get rid of that.
I agree with that.
I just, I do think, though, that we need to add dimensional standards to the UDO definitions, because if you look it up, it's pretty specific. It is pretty inclusive and it is pretty specific.
I agree with that as well.
I agree too.
Al, you okay down there?
Yeah, just listening very well.
All right, that's fine, no, that's fine, no problem. Okay, so if you wanna read more about that, um, go, I just put the link in there about the conditions that can be included in conditional zoning, okay? Um, now, the other place I got really, kinda bogged down today, was number H, submittal of a concept or site plan. I think for us, a concept plan is really a sketch plan. When you go through our UDO, if you look in the definitions, we use the word sketch plan, and it is pretty much what they're describing as a site plan, okay? The developer comes to you, or whoever's gonna do it, and they give you, they give you kind of a sketch, hey, here's what we're thinking, um, here's the adjoining properties, you know, here's a water feature, here's wetlands, that kinda thing, okay? So I'm good to change that to be a sketch plan.
Okay.
Cause concept plan, we don't have anywhere else in the UDO, and I'm afraid if we introduce that term, then we're just gonna cause confusion. And the UDO stands alone in confusion.
Yes.
All right, so, I'm gonna say this is okay, anybody got any objection to that? And we're not fini-, hey, guys, we're not gonna finalize this thing tonight, trust me.
What would be the difference between a sketch plan and a site plan?
A site plan is much more comprehensive.
That's kinda the answer.
Includes the plat map, it includes all of the.
Um, if you go in the UDO at the very end in the definitions, Mick McQ did a really nice job back there, and site plan is spelled out pretty specifically.
Okay.
Okay? You could, I think, and I was thinking about this today, I think you could have a site plan and not have a preliminary plat, because if you're not subdividing that property, and that property is already, like, let's say it's in Village Business District and it's three acres, and you're not subdividing anything, you're not gonna have to present a plat, because that plat's already filed. So then you're into the site plan, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Now, a lot of times, it could be that you have a site plan and a preliminary plat, but not necessarily. I kinda straightened my brain out on that this afternoon. Okay, the next thing, yeah, this isn't that long, is it? Okay. Revisions to approved conditional zoning.
Is that J yet?
That's J, good old J. Relation to, relationship to overlay districts, I mean, everything we have is in the watershed, that's the only overlay we have, so. Um, but revisions to approved conditional zonings, this is kind of the part that we still, um, need to kinda dig in on a little bit, and this has to do with the ten percent. Now, New Hanover County's Wilmington, right? It's Wilmington, okay. So, if you looked at their conditions, and I'm not saying their conditions are right for us, but it's just a place to start, okay? They were okay with building placement being changed, provided it doesn't decrease the setbacks agreed to by more than ten percent. And if you think about it, I mean, if you have, let's say you have a fifty-foot setback, okay, ten percent is five feet. It's not, it's not like you're cutting it in half, okay? Increases to building size and height not to exceed ten percent, um, that one.
Mary?
Yeah.
I'm just, I just don't understand, this language that you put here is just for discussion?
Yes, because it says, I, I cut and pasted it from somebody else. Oh yeah, 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 yeah. Um, increases to building size and height, I don't know about building height, and I'm gonna tell you why. I don't think it's an issue, but the fire department can only go up so high.
That's an issue.
Okay? And I think that's why we have, no, I don't really wanna look this up, but I think we're limited to like forty-five feet, maybe, um. Building size, I don't think is a huge, is a huge deal, but I don't know. Let me pull it out here, in the UDO, we have some limitations on building height. Whoops.
Who would be considered our planning director, would that be Lisa?
It would be Lisa, all, all that language, all that language needs to change.
It's six eight.
It's what?
Six, the six dash eight.
Is that building height?
Yes.
Teresa, you're the bomb, baby.
Right here. We don't wanna look that.
I'm looking right here.
Okay. Well, I'm putting the binder to proof.
You're good, you're good. All right, so. Okay, so for example, maximum building height is thirty-five feet in Village Business District. Now, because we allow up to fifty feet, and, and I guess maybe, maybe I see conditional zoning in business district more than any other place, but because we allow up to fifty feet in equestrian, if you took VVD and gave them ten percent on thirty-five, you're still under forty feet. And because we have forty feet for, um, we have forty, thirty-five feet, actually, of residential districts, and then you have forty to fifty feet in your equestrian, rural estate, residential agriculture, or stuff like that, so we probably would be okay. Um, I don't know, I, I don't wanna make a big deal out of this, but are we okay to give a variation for height? Like, I can't, I couldn't think of a good example of, like, I, I do read the Canon and Coats things, they say like some architectural design thing or something.
What, what is, is there like a percentage here, ten percent?
Yeah, that's what, New Hanover uses ten percent, and pretty much everywhere I read, I kept wondering, why do I keep seeing ten percent? I've started in Lillington, I saw it someplace else, well, when you get into what Canon and Coats and the statute wrote, that's what they used, and so that's what people took. Does that make sense?
It does.
I don't know, comments?
I mean, if we're gonna do it with other things, why not with height? I guess that's.
Well, I mean, I, I think we're okay, I just wouldn't wanna put us in a situation.
Because it isn't like a major thing.
I don't think so either, my only concern is you can't get higher than the fire, fire department can reach.
Well, would that, would this put us higher than that?
I don't think so. I don't think so, I can't, I, I don't really see somebody using conditional zoning in equestrian, or RA, or RE, where they can go up to fifty. So, I mean, I'm okay with it, I just wanna be sure that we've thought it through.
I think, I think there's more than, more than enough. I, I think going from the fire department standard, when you're moving to a construction of a, a commercial product, you have a whole nother set of bounds and, and resources that are available to you, so, than a residential product. So if, if we're making this for.
Well, it's gonna be across the board, every, every district will be able to have conditional zoning. I just think, based on the way we've developed, that it's more likely we would say it in VVD, and I could be totally wrong. I mean, I'm okay with it, I just.
I think ten percent, because that's, Southern Pantry Street did theirs in November.
Okay.
And, and it's the exact same thing, it's ten percent, everybody's going ten percent across the board, and I think that that keeps you within the bounds of what your top is in the, in the equestrian area, um, for the conditio- conditional zoning.
Yeah, well, everybody's doing ten percent because that's what it says on Canon and Coats in the general statute.
Okay.
It's an easy number.
Yes.
Um, nothing to do with this, but I'm hung up on something that is bothering me when I walk around, and I wanna know if it's addressed anywhere, if it, you know, so I'm gonna bring it up. It might not be related to this at all. Are, are there any, uh, regulations about the crawl space height? What, you know, when, when they're building a house?
No. That's done based on the plan and the lot.
Okay. I walk on Eagle Drive, and it's truly bothering me to see this huge now, you know, it looks like five, six feet of block under the building.
Is that a basement or crawl space?
And it, and it, and it looks, because it's, it looks to me like it's the same builder, that the first house they built, they never covered it, or camouflage it with anything.
Here's the thing, they're not required to.
Okay, so.
Unfortunately, four to five years ago, the state legislature passed something called SB twenty-five, the ban of every municipality, where they took away a municipality's right, not right, but a municipality's authority to regulate garage placement, minimum square footage, and bricking on, on.
I mean, it looks awful.
I agree, I, I'm with you.
I mean, it's like if you put, put a, build a building, a block building, and put a house on top of it.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
Unfortunately.
We can't do it.
We can't, they have, I mean, they have to landscape according to the landscape.
But there is, there's something like a requirement for landscape to cover that up?
No, because we can't control what they do on the foundation, so you can't single somebody out, cause they have block, to make them put up more landscaping.
So we could, so, in my case, where I got cited because I have this much space and I had to put the, something like, like planting under my shed.
Yeah.
Cause it was this much space from the ground.
Yeah.
And that warrants, you know.
That's an accessory building versus a residence.
And in a residence, if you have a deck or something, you're not required to put anything under it?
Totally different.
That's weird.
Totally different.
But it's weird.
Okay.
Anyways, I'm sorry that I interrupted because I thought in my.
Now, now, now you'll feel better.
No, no, I don't feel better, but I guess.
Okay, number three, the increase to the impervious surfaces shall not exceed ten percent. Okay, so we're governed by the watershed, so an impervious surface means water can't go through it. And I don't know that this one, if somebody was building to the max that they could in the watershed, I don't know that they could exceed it, because we're governed by the watershed.
Well, that, that overlay is gonna roll, it's gonna take precedence.
Right, but see, I don't even think. Yeah, you know what, I may just put that in there, as governed by the watershed. Increase to the impervious surfaces not to exceed ten percent. Yeah?
As governed by the watershed overlay, yeah.
Yep. All right, got it, okay. Um, modifications to structure floor plans, I don't know, and I'd have to ask Lisa this. We don't really.
Get into that?
Tell somebody how to structure their building on the inside. I didn't, I didn't get that one.
Um, would that be just the floor plan, or would that be, let's say, in this pre-planned neighborhood we're talking about over here, um, they have certain site, or plans, but then they will do an addition of a sunroom? Does that include, is that included in that? So if somebody comes in and goes, you know what, I love this house, but I'd like a sunroom, and then the builder, does the builder have the ability to say, I don't need to go back for approval for that, it's a short ten percent add to the floor plan, we can do that?
No, I don't think so, I think he has to come back to the zoning administrator.
I think so too.
So that's not considered floor, floor plan is really interior of the structure?
Yeah, and you know what, here's, here's the thing, we don't really do, I mean, that's one of the reasons SB got twenty, SB twenty-five got passed, is some municipalities were actually telling people how to structure the inside of their house, and I'd be like, right here, pal, I mean, get lost. So, um, I, I, I don't know about that one.
I don't think we would ever say anything about the modifications, we'd say something about the modifications of the footprint of the home, but not the interior.
And they've already covered footprint.
Building size of height.
Increase to building size and height not to exceed ten percent.
So that's a problem.
No, I've, I've not got there. Why does it say?
All right, okay.
Why does it say structure versus? Buildings, is there something like, that it's triggering, the actual word, structure versus?
I think those are interchangeable. Oh, structural floor plans.
Is the, is it the, the whole thing?
Well, floor plans versus structural building plans, totally different.
Yeah, that's what.
Very different, and this language would almost make it sound like they're. I, I, to me, I'm kinda thinking modification of structural building plans, I, because we're not gonna tell them, I mean, okay, you're gonna build a dentist office, and a blah, 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 and blah, 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 I don't, you know, I don't care where they put their bathroom, that's not up to us, that's, that's up to them. So I don't know, um, that might not be the right, might not be the right verbiage. Let's just see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of like, what, I'm, I'm hung up on what, what do they mean specifically by structure?
Want to find out.
And if they do something modifying the structure of the building plan, that's not minor, is it?
Well, what we're, what we're saying, we think is that they can increase the size of the height, but that's after it's approved, okay? I mean, it gets approved at thirty-five feet, it gets approved at twenty-five hundred square feet. Okay, well, something happens, now they need the building height to be thirty-seven feet, and they want the square footage to be twenty-seven hundred feet. Those things, those things, we're saying would be minor. But, structure, structure floor plans kinda bothers me, I don't think that's the right.
Well, it bothers me too.
Do they mean like, if you're moving a load-bearing wall or something like that?
Yeah, but still, but still, here's the thing, that's all governed by the building code too.
Sure.
I mean, a, a floor plan is an overhead view of the completed house.
And it doesn't, it's, it's not related.
There is a structural plan, like you said, that has to do with load-bearing walls and trusses and.
Here we go, structural building plans should always be prepared and sealed by a registered designer, blah, blah, structural building systems, blah, blah, where am I looking for what I, come on? Looking for the definition. Describes how the building will be constructed and discusses how internal finishes are to look. They include foundation plan, dimensions, locations for footings, framing plan for walls, subfloor plan for wood floors, roof plans, including tight pitch slope framing, details of drawings such as columns and all connections, structural layouts.
Okay, I, it's, I, I feel like it's too far of a reach to put it in the revisions to approved conditional zoning. Especially because there's, it doesn't qualify it as to specifically what. Or ten percent, or whatever it is, it doesn't say, just like, okay, well, maybe we'll start all over again and add a building.
You know what, that actually is a good point. Everything we've done so far has been very specific.
Minor to.
Modifications to structure floor plans, is that objective?
No.
I'm just asking, I mean.
It's very subjective.
Is it specific?
No.
Is it neutral?
Well, I'm not even too sure, too sure what it is, that's just the point. I think it's too much to put it under the revisions, you know what I mean?
All right, yeah, no, I do, and that's why we're talking about it. Okay, so let's. I'm gonna put delete question mark. I may have to, I may have to look around and see who else. That just might be bad verbiage there, but that's a good point, I don't know, um, modification, what does that mean?
And even the other, the, the other two.
Changes to, I mean, that they're gonna change it.
No.
In some way after approval.
It's too vague, in my opinion, to say that we were approved, we allow some revisions to it.
It is vague.
And, and how about this other one, modifications to the driveway, we wanna?
Uh, but here's the thing, that's required by DOT.
Okay.
If it's required by DOT, um, it is specific.
Okay.
And it is gonna be objective, and it's pretty neutral, if they're told to modify driveway locations by DOT, there's nothing.
Okay, so if they tell.
As, or should that be worded if required?
It doesn't really matter, I mean.
I would say, if, if, if we approved a site plan, or whatever we were calling it, and then, they, and then DOT is telling them to do it differently, I can understand, and I agree with you.
I just put modifications to the driveway locations as slash if required by North Carolina Department of Transportation. And we can put if, it doesn't matter.
I, I would drop the as and just put if required.
Okay? Okay? So the only, okay, and then modifications to the proportion of use type not to exceed ten percent. Okay, this one, you almost gotta go in and read Canon and Coats a little bit, because what it's talking about is, um, it, it used a housing example, where they were gonna trade ten percent of such and such a unit for ten percent of another unit. And I don't know, um.
This is also vague for me.
Well, no, it says ten percent, so that, that part, I mean, that, that's specific.
Okay, but proportion of use type? Can you define it specifically?
Let me give you an example, let's say, let's, let's keep it in VVD, let's say, now that would be size, though, like if someone was building retail storefronts, and the bar shop was here, and the restaurant was here, and, I don't know, the cigar store was here, and something else was on the end, if they went to make this building here ten percent bigger, it would modify the use, but that's not what it's talking about. It's talking, it's talking about in terms of, um.
What the, what the building is being.
Like free space.
No, the, the example had to do with density, the example they used in the two articles had to do with density.
But that's not, not the way I read this, this is like, let's say, I, I have housing, let's, let's assume, okay, for the type.
I, I, I remember, okay.
And then you have commercial, and then we're gonna take away from one to give to the other, I mean, that's how I'm understanding.
Yeah, but here's the thing, that's, conditional zoning wouldn't be used for mixed use, and commercial and, and residential would be mixed use.
Okay, so why does it say use type then?
Because it's talking, got it up.
Yep, I, I think this, we read the same thing, I think, in the link you had sent, this is what I read to be change of use, um, or the. This is what I read to be change of use, um, or the 10% fluctuation in change of use.
Involve a change in uses permitted, or the density of overall development permitted. I don't like that one.
I don't either.
Well, but, but it says such
It goes on, but like
Yeah.
Tw- trading an equivalent of dwelling units from one housing type to another, um
Or trading equivalent square footage between non-residential uses, that's interesting.
Okay, the, the, I think that what I feel uncomfortable is, we're talking about revising something that already came through the door.
Yeah, it's been approved.
And this is like opening up a, uh, opening up a kind of worms. You know what I'm trying to say? It's like, I feel like it's already
But it does not increase the overall density of the development, it does not change the footprint, it does not change the overall design and approved building. But you can
But then what is it doing?
Okay.
You can shit, well, you can shift from one section to another, like, just like you were saying.
I guess maybe my example wasn't so bad then.
Exactly, yeah, you can, like, you can shift, you know, let's say you have, you got approved for a string of buildings and you had approved, you had three thousand square foot, three thousand square foot, three thousand, and then you had a thousand. Well, then you wanna add fifteen to this and take away from this.
Take twenty, yeah.
You can do that without changing the footprint of the building and not need to come back for approval.
Okay, but I would then put that in there.
But it's interior, again.
But then I would specifically put that in there.
Well, here's what, is such modification may be possible if it could be demonstrated that the original approval foresaw such flexibility and the proposed shift did not increase, okay, so what, what they're saying is that when it was originally approved whoever, the council, when they approved it, saw that they might need some flexibility in shifting square footage.
But I, I, I think it needs all of that language to clarify that, it just can't put it like that, uh, uh, you know, in a vacuum and I think that it needs to be defined as to exactly what the thinking is be- behind the, the allowing a modification of proportional use type.
Okay, well
Not just leave it so, you know, big was enough to
How would you, um
I mean, some of the language you just, you were just saying that it's not going to change this, this, blah blah blah.
Modifications to proportion of use type not to exceed 10%, provided there's no change in use or density.
Or whatever else is necessary in there to
I don't know how we would prove that the original approval foresaw such flexibility, I mean, like, how would they
We're not that smart. I'm sorry.
How would anybody know?
You wouldn't know.
Yeah.
You really wouldn't know, um That's a good question, I don't know, we're into stuff now that I'm not
And this is too vague for me, that's what I feel, uh, I mean, the way, the way it's said here, we're like, trying to guess what it says, that's what I'm trying to say. I don't wanna have any guesses as to what that might be.
I think it goes back to interior and something that we don't really govern over.
Yeah, but if you decided to change let's say, the, the example you gave, um, we wanted to give this, this little stall on the end fifteen hundred square feet. That's some structural change to the building.
Absolutely, you're gonna have to move some walls.
Yeah.
So it's not that, it's not a piece of cake.
Well It's not a piece of cake, but again, it's governed by the state building code. I mean, it's not like you just go, oh, knock this wall over, I mean, they're gonna have to go through the process to get it changed. I'm just not sure if we should flush this out a little bit, and, I mean, the first ones modific- see, okay, okay, then how does this one fit with modifications to structure floor plans? Because we think modification to building plans.
Well, it sounds, it almost sounds like the same thing.
I need some research.
Sounds to be
It's, it sounds like it's going down the same direction, you're exactly right.
Yes.
What do we do now, Mary? I mean, in, in, what does Lisa do now in instances like this?
We've never dealt with an instance like this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, honestly and truly, Al, the first subdivision we've ever had in Foxfire is Windy Ridge. Oh yeah, that's it.
Okay, it, since we're, uh we're deleting the other one, right?
Well I've, I've got delete question mark. I think probably what we need to do and, and here's the problem though, a lot of people, you know, when somebody sees something in a canon codes article or in the, in the, in the statute, they just cut and paste that sucker because they know they're safe. I mean, like, took it out of the statute, right? Even if on our end, it becomes much more problematic to define and enforce.
Uh, may I make a suggestion to building or how you look at it and further
Yes, you may. Yep.
Needing further review? Could we combine the two and say something to the effect of structure
I was just thinking about that.
Or proportion of use and then add some language in there that ties you into code or something that it's not like ambiguous, you know?
Well It's, it's tied into code by law. The North Carolina building code, it, it's got, it'll be tied into that. Um, but that might not be a bad idea to, um to put them together. And the other thing I think I need to do is I need to look at some other municipalities and read how they everybody's a little different
Have they dealt with it?
And read how they define minors.
Well, I'm falling in love with Aberdeen, so if you want me to
Yes.
To look into it, I mean, I, 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 I wanted to even pay them a visit because
I was doing the same thing with Southern Plans.
You could.
The more I read, the way they did things, somebody in there knows what they're doing.
Well, it's, it's probably a paid planner.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm
Yeah, if you wanna go see him, that's fine.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm like, it's a joy, you know what I mean?
Good.
But the way how they, they deal with things.
Okay.
So maybe I can look into it. It's a very thorough UDO, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, on this last one, I'm gonna put combine
Do you want me to look into it a little bit?
Yeah, sure, if you want to. Question mark. Okay, and, and I'll find a couple other municipalities to look at. And if you guys wanna look at the town that you usually do, that's fine, that'd be great. Okay. I don't know that we can do much more on that one tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
The one thing that we don't wanna do is we don't wanna leave it so vague that you end up, um, putting Lisa in a bad spot.
No, I don't wanna vague either, I don't feel comfortable approving something that is
You just don't, yeah, you don't, you don't wanna do that. And remember too, that when you talk about conditional zoning, it is never designed to relieve hardship. That's what the variance procedure's for, okay? So if someone is coming to you, um, trying to get you to do conditional zoning, when really they need to request a variance conditional zoning doesn't, that doesn't relieve you from, from a hardship from something, they make that point a lot. Okay, um, the expiration of conditional zoning. New Hanover County used twenty-four months. That if within twenty-four months from the date of approval of the conditional zoning district, no building permit has been issued for the subject tract. The planning, and that would be us, planning and zoning, may schedule a hearing to consider the progress. I think twenty-four months is a pretty decent amount of time.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Even with, um, the guys in Windy Ridge, I mean, we started talking to them in September of twenty twenty-one, okay? And it took them a long time to get rolling, but still, easily within twenty-four months. Somebody who can't pull it in twenty, pull it off in twenty-four months probably is not
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Is, is not gonna get there, so I'll reword this part, um, and put a little bit of process in there because I think it would have to be the village council that would have to pull it, 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 it would have to be them that would have to pull it. So let me just Alright. Put it out there. So we're all agreed on twenty-four months is okay?
Yep. And I like the wording in there exactly.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just detail it to our process. Okay, that's pretty easy, alright. Okay, now Let me go back to something. Okay, if you go, can everybody pop the, everybody got the UDO up by chance, anybody got it up?
Everybody.
If you go
No, I don't have it there.
Tracy's so damn funny.
Well, I do, I wonder, that was the purpose of it.
That's fine, hey, look, you're, I'm fine with that. Okay, so I think it's sections, let me just figure out the right section. I think it's seventeen point one. Um, no, it's not. There's definitions, it's a little place. Let me get down to the right spot here, here we go. It is article what is that, ten, article sixteen in the UDO.
Article sixteen?
Yep.
Can we do my Roman numbers definitions?
Yeah, I didn't think about what it was for a minute, that's really bad. Um, so this is a pretty, it's pretty comprehensive, um, and one of the things I was looking for was, and I just thought it's something we gotta go back to too, if you scroll all the way down to the S's and get the site plan. Because in this conditional zoning thing, we're referencing site plan, um Okay, it's a pretty good, um, it's a pretty good definition of what a site plan is. Okay? Um, because I think some of the conditional zoning things, as we just discussed before, if that property's already platted they're not gonna give us a plat, that, that's already done, okay? Um, they might just bring in a site plan and we need to be sure that we have some requirements for the site plan. And you'll see at the bottom of this definition, it actually says, a site plan may also be approved as part of a conditional zoning decision. Okay, so that definition of the site plan, um is pretty, is pretty comprehensive. But we need to make some kind of reference in our document too, um and let me just go to where I found it here, blah blah blah. Uh, if you go back to H, where it says submit a, we're gonna change that to sketch plan, um it says each project must include a sketch plan and be followed by a site plan that meets the site plan requirements listed in this ordinance and applicable requirements of the UDO article seven subdivision checklist as modified by any site-specific conditions. I put this in here, um, which is fine, but what if they don't, what if they don't have to have a plat? You still have to have conditions on what they're gonna do. Does that make sense?
It does, but at that point, if you're, if, if you can, if you have a site plan just, uh, in general without a plat, then why does the plat become important?
Well, it only becomes important if they're taking a piece of property and subdividing it.
Exactly, but that should be part of the site plan.
Well, but what I'm saying is, what if they're not, what if they're not subdividing anything?
Then that, eh, then if the, if the site plan doesn't include a subdivision, then you know the plat is not there.
Right, right, but what I'm saying is, are we comfortable that the definition we've given for a site plan is enough to get everything that we need to have?
I think so.
Cause if you look at the subdivision checklist, it's pretty comprehensive.
I don't think I have the, I don't have the subdivision checklist, but
It's in the UDO.
By nature of what you're doing, you're subdividing, that's gonna have a site plan, that's gonna have a plat map. If you're subdu- if you're making a subdivision, by nature you are subdividing.
Oh, you have to, right, but what I'm saying is, if you're not subdividing, okay? Do we think the definition that we have in the UDO of what's required for a site plan is sufficient not to list specific, um, requirements of a site plan in the, in this, in the ordinance?
Can we just refer
I think so, because it says, it clearly says, you know, you have a scale drawing, supporting text showing the relationship between lot lines and the existing or proposed uses, building and structures on the lot. So you will have the lot, you will see their site plan and drawing and if they say, and if, and if it doesn't match up with what, you know, what you know to be that lot then you know that, you know, something's missing.
Oh, yeah.
That they, but you can't
Can you make reference to it, just to
Well, that's, that's
Subdivide the lots.
But you, but if you have a four-acre parcel and you're gonna put a retail thing in there, you don't have to divide anything. If it's all zone VVD and you're just gonna build on it. Okay, you, one developer's gonna go in there, you're not selling lots.
You're just gonna build a structure.
Exactly.
Mary, can you make reference to
That doesn't require a plat.
But it does require a site plan.
Right, oh yeah, definitely, yeah.
Can you make reference to
That's what I wonder.
Uh, site plan as defined in the UDO?
Yeah, as defined, that's what I'm wondering. Maybe that's what we can do.
And then you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
That means the definition in the UDO. How about if we did it like that?
Gosh, you would almost always have a plat, plat anyway, cause plat means a map or a map subdivision or site plat.
Mm-hmm.
Almost always be there. Right?
I mean, really, that's, if you, even if you pull something from the county GIS, that is, that is the plat.
Okay.
What's existing, when you, like, let's say you're gonna do a site plan. When you pull that at the county, or even on their website, to show the lot, to start your plan, that is the plat.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm making the differentiation between if you have a site plan that's gonna require sub, that's gonna require subdividing the property.
Mm-hmm.
Then what kicks in is our subdivision checklist, and that's very comprehensive.
And it definitely has the site, the plat map on it.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah, yeah, yeah. What I'm, what I wanna be sure we nail is that if it does not involve submitting a plat, cause it's already platted that we have significant detail in our definition of site plan that we get everything we need. I think that's what
I think you have that in the UDO.
I think the definition in the UDO is good, okay, then I'm gonna mess with this a little bit.
Cause it clearly says you need the, the lines, the setbacks, all of that would be included in, in the site plan.
When this is approved, will it be part of the UDO or it's gonna be a separate something?
What do you mean, this? No, it'll be part of the, it'll be part of the UDO, it becomes an ordinance.
Okay.
So we'll have a new
Conditional zoning plan?
Conditional zoning subdivision, or
Yeah.
Sub number six dash whatever.
Yeah, something like that. Lisa will love us for that, but that's okay.
Does she know we're doing it?
Oh, heck yeah.
Why didn't they have one in the past, Mary, just no real reason?
Well, you know
It's no need.
We, Foxfire was a nothing. When I moved here twelve years ago, realtors wouldn't even show Foxfire. We may as well been in a different state.
Really?
Oh, heck yeah, oh yeah, people were like, you live way out there. I'm like, you've never been on Chicago Expressway, have you? I mean, you know, I mean, and now it's not like that.
No, it's desirable.
And growth always tests zoning, always, I mean, it's just the nature, it's just the nature of the beast.
Okay.
So to have some, and at the time, it was, it comes into the state of North Carolina in the early two thousands. It's judicially challenged and conditional zoning wins, I think, in twenty twenty. And so that's why it now is the preferred method by most municipalities when they go to approve things, instead of doing a special use permit they do a, they do it as a conditional zoning, because everybody has to agree to the conditions in writing. And if the village doesn't like what the developer says the conditions are, the developer doesn't wanna change, the village just goes no. It's legislative, it's not judicial, which is good.
They don't have a conditional zoning.
Oh.
Uh, they have district.
Oh, they, they are
Conditional district?
You don't think Well, conditional district would be the same thing. Let me just get the UDO.
Conditional zoning district?
Southern Plans calls there's a CD also, instead of CZ.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the same, same premise.
I couldn't find much on Whispering Pines, I didn't look super hard, but I couldn't find too much.
They may not have one.
Really?
They may not, it's, it is, I mean, it as, as towns go, Whispering Pines has been around a long time, they may not have one.
It's actually very, very short, so I think, but this is like
Yeah.
There's nothing there.
I think, um, Southern Plans has a little blurb and it talks about minor and what's considered minor, and then it has like a, a list of conditions of the I think, um, Southern Pines has a little blurb, and it talks about minor and what's considered minor, and then it has like a, a list of conditions of the minor, and anything above and beyond that is a major.
No, but this one doesn't even have that. I'm talking about Aberdeen.
Well, and you know what? When we're done with this, I'm going to have McQ look at it, our former mayor, C and I have talked about it, and he, he's, and, you know, if he says, hey, look, I think you're making this too complicated, he'll give us suggestions.
He's, he's an attorney, right?
Yeah. He's a really smart attorney. Okay. So I'm gonna change that, um, to be followed by a site plan that meets the site plan requirements as defined in Section twenty-one dash sixteen dash one. Okay, perfect. All right, okay. And. Right. Flush out our process. Okay, all right, guys, anything else on this?
Not really.
Going once, going twice, okay, let me save it.
So, just so I'm clear going forward, we're gonna do some research on our towns about, um,
What they consider.
Modification to structure floor plan, change in use of den- density, and, uh, minor, what's considered minor.
Yeah, they're gonna have a list of things that they consider to be minor, and I'm interested in their list. And you know what? Don't want us to, you know,
Like, this is.
Run around the tree too many times trying to figure it out, but we'll see some commonality, and then we can decide what applies to us.
Okay.
Okay, um, all right, next. Get out of all this. Okay, next up, let me just make some notes. I think if we knock in the minor part, and I can flesh out the process for, um, uh, expiration, I, I think we're okay.
Okay, I'm gonna send you, I, I did a little bit on the minor part with Southern Pines, I'm just gonna send that to everybody.
Totally fine.
After we're, I'll email it to you, and then we can kinda look it over, and we can see their list.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's totally fine. And you know, our list doesn't, you know, Southern Pines is a lot more complicated.
Yeah.
You know, we need to make our list applicable, but it, we don't need to make it hard.
Yeah, I, I think if we make it too complicated, it becomes.
Too complicated, it's gonna work.
So we're looking for modification to the structural floor plan, and what they consider minor.
Actually, you know what? I would just go into Whispering Pines, and if they have something on conditional zoning, look for what they consider to be minor modifications.
And they might have it listed as CD, which is that.
Yeah, they do, conditional district.
There you go, that's the same thing.
Okay.
CZ, sleazy, I mean, kinda the same.
Okay, yeah, it's kinda looking at it a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So let's go to, uh, public dash municipal zoning. I gotta admit, Pinehurst doesn't have much.
Okay, so that's what I was impressed here with. I even brought this.
Did you put one for all of us? You are wonderful.
Hilarious. How many trees did you kill for yourself? That's what I wanna know.
You have to understand, I like this.
They're pine trees, they grow back faster.
Stop, stop defending her.
It's the same thing.
All right, so, basically, this is Aberdeen, okay? So they call, they have a, in the UDO, they have a section that is called institutional use classification. And so they have a definition as to what it covers, okay, and, uh, then the characteristics, which basically includes public, nonprofit, or charitable, charitable nature that provide a local service to people of the community, blah, 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 blah. And so then they, it's so extensive that they have it broken down into civic, daycare, education, and I didn't bring the whole thing, so there's more to it, but basically, you were interested in finding out, Mary, because the things that we're interested in is the part that says under the
Government facility.
It says governmental facility.
Yes, recreation.
And then they have public safety facility.
And public recreation, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are, those are the things that I think that, you know, we, we were talking about. So they're calling it, uh, they're calling it institutional use classification.
Okay. I thought we settled on municipal.
But I mean, yeah, but we were gonna look further to see.
Yeah, here's, here, here's what I'm wondering, and I just, and I don't know, I mean, we may be pushing the envelope a little bit, but what I'm wondering is, do they have specific, like, when you go to that category, does it say fences can't be more than four feet? Does it say, um, you know, setbacks or this, or, you know, that kinda thing? And see, I didn't, in Pinehurst, I sorta didn't find that.
No.
It's kinda wild.
Southern Pines uses FRR, which is facilities, resource, and recreation district. Um, and they, they also don't, uh, and, and their definition of the FRR is, uh, public land uses, including government, recreation, education, natural resource, and utilities. Um, privately owned uses, um, that can be golf courses can be involved in that.
See, that would, that would be, that would be on recreational district.
Related facilities. And that's, that is part of theirs. A, 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 a public or private golf course can be involved in that. Um, but they do not have.
There are no specifics.
No, they, they said that, um, authorized uses is outlined in UD, in the, at three point seven of the UDD, which is basically in a, in a, it's established in their parks and recreation section, in their, um, government building section. Like, if you're looking for the rules of, they break it into each department, then those departments, because it's such a big municipality, they have whole sections that have their own rules, and it's less part of zoning, it's more part of their own departments.
Well, uh, the, 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 this one does not include, like, the public, like, the golf course or anything like that, no recreation.
And this one does, um, and land trusts are also involved in this one.
Interesting. For us, I think we need to keep it really clean.
So the Whispering Pines was, like, I think I sent that to you, because I wasn't gonna make it, it was just GOV for government facilities. And then I also kinda looked at the county, Carthage, and they actually mix the, the two together, and they call it
Oh, yeah.
Central Business District.
And see, I don't think, I, 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 I think we need to keep this really clean.
I agree.
Because we already have a recreational district.
Yeah, I would not mix the two.
I, I like the municipality.
And municipality, municipality means to me municipally owned.
Yes.
Okay, I don't want, I don't want municipal, I don't want it private in there, because
Yeah, I agree.
if we go, if we ever get like another recreational type thing in the village that's private, it's gonna be done by conditional zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Because you, not, you know.